I'm going to show you some screenshots. And I think we're going to have the completed system by February. We'll obviously share it with you before it goes to the general public. So you'll be able to give us some generous feedback on that. So we'll present it to you first in November. You can take a look at it and see what you think. You can put it on your smartphones, play it anywhere else before it goes out. See if this is something that you want to take part with us as well. And we can add more menus and more tips and information.
Great, thanks. Anybody have questions? All right, any other public comments? Ray, you have a piece of paper, I see.
Yeah. Is this like a blow screen? Can you put like Hawaii on here for me or something? A little backdrop.
Hello? Hello? Does this work?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hello, Ray Lanotti. I come down here tonight to talk about the municipal center. For decades, the town and village has been moving towards consolidation. Through shared services and municipal agreements, this goal has been getting closer to reality every year. Two events that rarely occur: the Mets are in the World Series, and tonight, the village's board has a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity: the ability to enter into agreement to share a municipal center with the town. We will not only move one step closer, but take a giant leap. Envision this: town, village, police and courts, all under one roof. This will create efficiency. This will increase communication. This will create convenience to the taxpayers, and this will create a unified town. The plans are aligned. Take action tonight and vote yes.
Anyone else from the public? Okay. I'd like to make a motion. We approve our consent agenda.
Second. Yes, that's mine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. First item on our business agenda: we have a resolution regarding the approval of bills and claims. That's a roll call.
Yeah, Joe.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve this resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So officially, Rogers, aye; Rockford, aye; Rockwood, aye; Currie's absent, and Nonnae, aye. Four ayes, zero nays, zero stein, one absent motion heard.
Great. Okay. Item two: discussion to rent or own a combined municipal center with the town. We actually have a -- Don Kerr is not with us tonight, but he wanted to share some feedback on this topic, so he actually created a video that we will now play. I'm going to move that podium out of the way. Is this in the screen? Have you confirmed that?
I -- that's why I put it where I want it.
Some volume?
(inaudible) question concerning the upcoming joint municipal building. At the most recent joint meeting of the village and town, the village is being committed to joint with the town in design and construction of this joint municipal building. That ship has sailed, and we are now partners in that effort moving forward. Full partnership was the consensus arrived at between the village and the town. Yet the question on the agenda this evening is about something different. It's about a landlord and tenant relationship. I've done some research, and I have what I think is great news for the village and town and for the people of New Falls, because researchers revealed a proven and demonstrated path forward for joint ownership of this municipal building that would allow the town and the village to be full partners, consistent with what we discussed and agreed to at that joint town-village meeting. It's Section 15 of New York State Local Finance Law that addresses joint undertakings with each municipality taking an unproportional debt. Bond council, which is already on routine here in New Falls, could provide a plan specific forward in terms of our project. Let me take a moment to acknowledge before I go on the considerable efforts of Marty Erwin, our councilman, and others in researching these questions. But one benefit of having partners is that they bring new ideas and new perspectives, and one has emerged here. For instance, as recently as a couple of days ago, New Falls had not yet consulted with their about bond council or about bond council to discover or explore the path to joint ownership of this building. Bond council was the first suggestion of Rosendale Supervisor when I called her. They're planning right now, when he tightens a bond council, to join the old, their municipal building with Marbleton. Bond council was the first suggestion when I called the school districts assistants superintendent for business. And when I called that bond council for the school district, not ours, he stated that generally renting or leasing voluntarily was generally ill-advised. Also had a chance to speak with officials of several New York State municipalities who have jointly financed and now joined the own municipal buildings. The community of Louisville had a situation similar to ours: town owned land and a building within their village. The village bought in via a bond and filed a notice of percentage of ownership of that building. The community of Akron, New York jointly purchased and built an appropriate on a 50-50 basis with each municipality doing its own bonding. The potential negative implications for the village can be tenet, whether a partner took till or above profile, and wholly avoidable and unnecessary. The opportunity it means to move forward as partners without the landlord tenant is clear and demonstrated under Section 15 of New York State Local Finance Law. So I'd like colleagues to consider that and to consider how we can preserve a full seat of dignity as opposed to being someone's tenant. And I urge you to take the time. If we can't come to that decision review on the information tonight, I guarantee you can make a good decision, not a quick one. Thank you, and I'll hear you for the person next up.
Great. Any board members have questions, comments on this topic?
Yes. If you recall--
Microphone, Tom.
Microphone, yes. I have a dean's voice that it usually carries without the need for electronic devices. We had agreed that I would join with Don in some of the explorations here, and I didn't know that we would each of us be calling the supervisor in Rosendale. But I also had a conversation with her, and I had a previous conversation with her assistant. And the situation in Rosendale is an interesting one. They confirm that they have a plan to co-locate with the town of Marbleton at the site that they -- Rosendale currently occupies in Cotticill. This site is owned by the school district presently, but they have a lease agreement already in effect. That's why they're occupying the space. And that lease agreement would be extended to include Marbleton upon their final decision to move in. It's a certainty, according to all accounts, that they will do this. They just haven't quite done it yet. And they do have a commitment to purchase this property after five more years of the current lease. Now, when I spoke about an option to buy, the supervisor said, "Well, you might call it that." But it's really not an option. There's a mandatory -- there's a clause for mandatory session of the property to Rosendale and Marbleton jointly after the five-year period is up. So rather than an option that they have to exercise, it's a requirement in the agreement that the property be then ceded to Rosendale and Marbleton. The intermunicipal agreement is in preparation to co-locate these two towns in the same building, which they would jointly own. And the further terms of ownership are -- that is to say, how much would each of them own and so forth will all be specified in the IMA, which doesn't yet exist. It isn't finalized. That IMA will also allow for conditions of change in the future so that they could renegotiate such matters as how much each of them own, and they would agree in advance to allow for such changes to occur by mutual agreement in the future. So they wouldn't be bound, for example, to an agreement that they make now that might not make sense 10 years from now, given the changes in demographics and so forth. So that, I think, is essentially the conversation with Rosendale-Marbleton.
Anyone else?
I wish Don were here to be able to speak to some of these things. Watching a television program isn't as a hearty discussion to really flesh out an issue. And I feel like Don got us a lot of information in the last couple of days, and I'd really like to hear him speak to it. I'm not so sure that I agree with it, but I would like to hear him speak to it.
I can comment a little bit on some of Don's findings. There's no question that two municipalities can both borrow and pursue ownership of the same property. But in this case, I disagree with Don that there are negative implications if the village were to lease. I actually believe the exact opposite. I think it's a benefit for the village to lease this property from the town. Any sort of control issue can be negotiated within the lease. I mean, that's what a contract is for. You make the lease a certain length of time, and you could identify any conditions that you could possibly want, and that could be dealt with in the lease. The idea that an equity stakehold is valuable, I mean, that's already being achieved because the -- all village taxpayers would be owning this building because it would be a town-owned asset, and all village taxpayers, along with any folks outside of the village in the town, any asset is being paid for via the A fund. So what we have as a village is a very healthy balance sheet. Moving forward, we're borrowing north of $4 million from USDA to pay for some needed water filtration upgrades up at our water treatment plant. We also have several millions of dollars facing this village if we're going to upgrade 100-year-old water main infrastructure. So having as little debt on our balance sheet is an incredibly valuable thing. So that, I think, is why I would take the exact opposite interpretation of Don's in that being a tenant, a partner with the town, is the optimal path versus trying to pursue a borrowing so that we are both bondholders and have borrowed for the purchase of this building. Additionally, there would be layers of complication and steps to even go down this path because currently the town owns that property. There's state law that requires our village, if we were to own the property or if we were to own the building, we would also have to own some of the property. So the property would have to be re-deeded. We would have to involve attorneys. It's just additional unnecessary expense for both the village and the town.
It's a very minor thing to be able to put someone else on a title, correct? I mean, it's not -- I'm not seeing that as a giant hurdle.
What I've found with this municipal work is everything that appears to be minor is complicated and expensive and time-consuming. So every additional step just makes a situation more complicated. And that's what we were discussing at last week's meeting and why we received the council that we received from our treasurer, from our village attorney, that the cleaner, neater, more efficient path is to partner with the town by renting space from the town. And-- And I, I continue to heed the advice of our treasurer, who I asked to, to join us if we had any specific questions for Nancy. And I heed the advice of our, of our village attorney, Will Frank. What we, what we want to do is to have a very neat and identifiable arrangement with the town. Creating something that's, that's more complicated, that complicates and, and adds debt to our balance sheet is not good for the village. That's, that's my, my take on why we would look to lease this, this space and work as a partner with the town via that mechanism as opposed to trying to be a co-owner.
Are you referring to being a straight tenant or an agreement that would end up a rent-to-own type of agreement where at the end of the bond period, we would gain an equity stake in the building as we discussed at our last meeting?
We, we could certainly do that. But municipalities are not in the business of, of trying to acquire assets because we're interested in, in capital gains. We own assets for, for specific uses.
Such as having a home. If we move into a joint municipal center, we're giving up this building. And then at the end of the lease, we would have no home. That is something that puts us in a very bad place to negotiate, which is why we've gone down this road this far.
And that's, that's why you negotiate a lease with, with very specific terms. In terms of the length of the lease is X, you have right of first refusal to, to re-up your lease. You know, anything that, that can be negotiated, we can include in that, in that contract with the town.
Rebecca?
I, this, I almost feel like that's, well, first, to be looking at negotiating a lease, first, the town would need to know that we are a potential tenant in order to know what size building they would build. So-
Well, we've, we've agreed that we're partnering with the town to, to occupy a building together. And the town is, is looking to move forward by retaining an architect who would then be responsible for identifying programming needs by interviewing both the town and the village and the courts and the police to determine exactly how much the different entities would use as far as space. So with that information, you then negotiate the terms of your lease.
So if we don't have that information yet, why are we bothering to discuss back and forth what kind of a, what we should deal with?
Well, that, that's, that's, that's kind of the point is we, the, the idea is that we're moving in parallel. We're beginning to negotiate what items would be included in that contract or what terms we would want. So the, 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 the expense portion could be based on the amount of square footage that the village would be using, based on the, the programming that the architect does to identify how much space the, the village needs, how much space the town needs for offices, et cetera. So that's, that's what we're trying to do, is to move this process forward. This is the, this is the, the more prudent, cleaner, better relationship with the town. And we can work on creating that document with the town as the architect, who will be selected by the town, will then identify the programming needs. And then we can take that information and use the template for a contract that we would be creating with our attorney and with the town.
So basically, the, the architect is going to come up with a building, essentially on paper. And then we hammer up the details of the lease?
You hammer out the final details based on how much space we're using, what the space is being used for, yes. So we're, we're creating a template without specific details or, or monetary agreements. But what we're doing is we're, we're creating that framework. And then when we have the inputs that we receive from the architect, we then come up with, you know, what the lease and what the specific terms will look like.
I re-watched our discussion at our last meeting. I watched the video and I watched a good portion of the town board meeting, which followed the, the next night. And I was just a, a little taken aback by how quickly the conversation had changed. It felt like the conversation changed at our board meeting that night, where we were no longer talking about or even considering so much the idea of joint ownership. And in watching that meeting, I'm, I'm listening to our discussion and looking at all of us sitting in our own building. You know, which is something we need to think about. Do we really need to give up our own building and become a tenant? Yes, this building has problems, but is it going to make that big of a difference for us in terms of savings? And anything else that, that benefits our community? And in watching the town board meeting, from the supervisor's comments, it appears as if, for her at least, that the consideration of us being in joint ownership was completely unreasonable. I've, I've written out comments that I made during our meeting. I wrote out comments that were made at that meeting. And, you know, it's very clear that the conversation barely quickly shifted from that of a joint ownership or even any consideration of a lease to own directly into just strictly tenant. And it just, I just don't know how that happened so quickly.
Well, I, I can say that, you know, I can, I know how things happen quickly. Because in the course of this set of discussions, I was initially in favor of a ownership status. And then I went over into a happily considering and accepting a lease status. When Dennis mentioned the prospect, which I think all of us took quite seriously, of a lease to own, then I thought, wow, that's an interesting, and, and not just interesting, not just, oh, I'm intrigued by that, but an interesting real prospect, which is why I went ahead and made the calls that I did and have considered that. And I was very taken with the options that I heard coming from the supervisor in Rosendale. Because she was assuring me not just about a, you know, a lease to own, quote unquote, in their case, option, but also about the possibilities of working through in specific detail many factors in an agreement, in an IMA, that could be particularly tailored to the needs of each of the municipalities. So I'm once again thinking that, well, you know, we could craft, of course, I wouldn't want to do the crafting. We would have our attorneys do the crafting. We could craft a, an agreement that would suit our needs in particular. So I would, I haven't yet spoken to our attorney at all about this. But I've seen the interchange with the mayor. And I think that we could work out a very good arrangement that would assure us of a, a solid, if you want, ironclad contractual arrangement with the town that would not disadvantage us over the law fund. So that's how I could change from, you know, I don't think that I'm generally a wishy-washy person. I could change at least four times over the course of this discussion, which position I would take.
I would be interested in, in actually seeing the agreement, the written agreement between Marble Town and Rosendale to see.
Yeah, here's one of the other issues. I don't think it quite, it, it's not finished yet. They're still working out between them the terms of the IMA. I think, however, it will be ready, I got the impression it will be ready soon, but I don't know how soon.
But, but what you can do with a contract is you can identify what rights you want to secure as a village. That's the point of the contract. It, it's incorrect to believe that as a tenant, you're some sort of, by default, second-class citizen. This is a, you're going to have to have an IMA or a lease agreement whether you're co-owners or whether you're a tenant and an owner. So these things will all be articulated in the agreement, whatever type of agreement it is. And that's why we use our council, we would be using Will Frank to hammer out these details. I, I feel incredibly comfortable that Will is not suggesting that we go down a, a rabbit hole that's not in the best interest of our village. And he would be working incredibly hard to make sure that the terms of our lease agreement would be in the best interests of our village.
I agree with that.
So, again, getting back to, it's actually a disadvantage for us to be a co-owner where we're taking on debt and we're potentially compromising our credit rating. That's, we have this, this option not to do that. And that, I think, is an incredibly valuable option to-
But in a rent-to-own situation, we're not bonding, they are, and then we're paying them rent and we're gaining equity. So I don't understand why you keep coming back to this point.
Okay, well, I can address that point as well. So the rent-to-own, what you're describing is, sure, we can rent-to-own, we can build equity. The, the village can own more of an equity stake in that building. So now we're just taking operational money and diverting it towards an illiquid asset that we're never going to, to, the idea is not to sell this building in the next hundred years. The idea is to keep this building for the next hundred years. So why would we choose to go down that path? Why would we choose to buy more equity in an illiquid asset that we have no intention of selling as a community?
We haven't seen any rates for renting versus renting to own, so I'm not sure how you can even compare anything when we don't have any numbers in the-
Well, we know for certain that if you rent, your payment is going to be less versus a rent-to-own.
Typically, but as I said, there have been zero numbers that come to us, so. I get what you're saying. I still feel I would like to have this conversation with Trustee Kerr here, given that he's on the building committee with you.
I have no problem with that. So let's move on to the, to the next topic.
Well, I would like to just defer until later in the meeting if we can put it back on the table.
Later in this meeting?
Yeah, if we can put it back on the table. Just give us a chance to just let it, let it sit, let it think, you know, and then if we, if we want to reconsider it, then-
Or, or actually, does anyone have any specific questions for our, our treasurer, who I, I asked to join us tonight? Any specific questions for Nancy before we let her go home? Did you have a, a question or comment, Marty? Feel free to come up and, and take a mic. It's right here, Marty, grab this one, grab this.
Can I just sit here?
Yeah, perfect.
I'm Marty Irwin, I'm on the town board and focused on the municipal center. What I could offer, if you wish, is like your question about the ownership, how much you own. From our point of view, I believe, and I guess I should say from my point of view rather than our point of view, we could reverse it and the village could own it and the town could be the tenant. Because in, in the IMA or lease agreement or the combination of the two, as, as Mayor Rogers was saying, all of the things that we need would be addressed in that and hopefully, as we needed them, but it's a negotiation, so it might be some give and take. And in that scenario, the town wouldn't need to go into debt. As Tim was saying, in the other scenario, you guys don't need to go into debt. Or as was, I heard discussed, some equity ownership, depending on how that's structured, could be fifty-fifty, sixty-forty, forty-sixty, because it's, it deals a lot with the economics of it. So who's borrowing money, who's paying it back? What are the other costs associated with the development? I heard a comment about the land and Tim observing, well, if we were partners, fifty-fifty, then we have to figure out what the land is worth. And there'd be an expectation then, or at least a desire on the town's part, to say, well, the land's worth ten dollars. Please put your five dollars on the table and we'll put our five dollars on the table. Certainly can be done, those are all doable scenarios. But the cleaner one is, we put the ten dollars on the table. It's our money, so we had to borrow that ten dollars. So the lease would reflect that your proportionate share, whatever that might end up being, anywhere from zero to a hundred percent, would be paid in, in the payments periodically. So, so my only point is, I think anything can be done. And the other thing I would like to say is that, and I think maybe we said and I missed it, tomorrow night, the expectation at our town board meeting is that we will authorize engaging the architect. And that we'll start that process with him. It'll take us a couple of weeks to negotiate a contract for him to get mobilized to begin doing his programming of the project where he does the interviews of everybody. And the direction to him will be, assume the village is a part of this exercise, this project. So he'll be interviewing our department heads and your department heads or whomever it is that they want to do that interviewing with, just as though we're going forward together. And what we understand is that that takes about two weeks for the architect to do that phase of the project, of the interviews and gathering data and then saying, well, here's how much space it looks like is needed now and it looks like there'll be some growth in the future. So here's how much space you might anticipate needing in the future. And, and all of this time, we can continue to have these conversations and coming up with a conclusion and the town is okay with that. But I guess I would say that at the end of that programming phase, when the architect is now saying, I'm ready to put pencil to paper, that's when the architect really needs to be given the direction, am I drawing spaces that accommodate both the town and the village or only the town? So, so just to share with you, there is a timeline, we are moving forward. And I would say that is probably about a one-month period from tomorrow night until we are at the point where we have to say to the architect, here's what we want you to draw now. I don't know if that's of any help to you, but for what it's worth.
No, I think it's worth it.
Is it not, is it not the case that we made at least a commitment principle to move forward?
I think we have, I think we did that at the last joint meeting.
And that's why we're engaging the architect, as though we are.
So that's, yeah, that should not be an issue of concern to you. The question will be, how do we do it? And I take some minor consolation in the fact that Marble Town and Rosendale are still working on their IMA, even though, you know, they're, they feel certain that they're going to do it. They are certain they're going ahead with this. So I want us to feel certain that we're going ahead with this, but how?
That's how we're proceeding, as though we're going to head together. And the details, not to make light of them, but the details will get worked out in, in the next month.
I'm sure there's plenty more details we're going to have to work out. We're only focused on finding a good solution.
Right, which is, which is, which is why it's so important to commit to moving forward. So we can engage, no, but we, what we need to do is we need to start creating that framework for this lease agreement. So we can work with our attorney and start spelling out generally what this will look like. Because as I said before, every project takes longer than anyone anticipates. And that's especially true for municipal work. I was at the transportation implement- I was at the Transportation Implementation Committee meeting last night and the chair was teasing us and saying, how are you guys going to build a municipal center? We've been working for over eight years to try to get a bus shelter on Main Street and how difficult that is. Everything takes an enormous amount of work and we have a very clear and logical and clean path here and we've been advised by our treasurer, we've been advised by our attorney. And it's just neater and cleaner and the more hurdles that we add to it, the more difficult we're gonna make an already challenging process. And that's why I would really like to see us move forward and begin this discussion.
Just, just as an aside, Tom, I, I had a chat with Michael, I can't remember his last name, the supervisor at Marble Town.
I have his name.
And he, he shared with me that part of their process, which we wouldn't have to go through, is because the Marble Town employees will be physically working in another political jurisdiction, Rosendale, that they also need to have some state legislation passed and signed by the governor. And I don't know how that plays into their, their timeline, but we, we don't have to deal with that.
They're contiguous but not overlapping.
Ah, is that what it is? Yes.
I think they just passed it.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, that was in the newspaper yesterday.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
I don't wanna intrude in your meeting, but if there's anything else that I can share with you, I'm happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
Well, I would, I, I would approve a motion, if we were to make one, to, to lease, given that the details of the lease agreement were still to be worked out by our attorney.
That's exactly the, the advice that our attorney, Will Frank, has suggested to me. He said, what you need to do is you need your board to agree to authorize the mayor and the village attorney to begin identifying what this lease agreement will look like. The terms will be, will be discussed and nothing will, nothing will be agreed upon unless it's presented to our board, but this is the path that we need to take as far as creating a clean and identifiable arrangement between the town and the village.
Well, I actually agree with, with Dennis. I'd like to have Don in person and we meet just next week with the holiday schedule.
And from what Marty just said, we have a solid two-month timeframe to get this all worked out. And while I'd hate to wait until the last minute.
We said one month.
One month.
One month, okay. Even still, that gives us time to let Don come, present his findings in a way that may be a little bit conducive to a two-way conversation and especially given that he's on the municipal building committee and he feels so strongly about it, I would like to hear what he has
Then I guess we defer this until next week.
Okay, so we'll, we'll put this on the agenda for next week and I don't think we're gonna be discussing it further tonight as you suggested, so we can.
I'm willing to go.
Thank you, Nancy.
Excuse Nancy. Thanks for.
Drive safe. My God, I know, you don't like driving at night, let alone this.
Good night.
Thank you.
See you, George. The next item I wanna put on the November fourth meeting as well.
Thank you, Marty.
I spoke with, with Matt, our parking attendant, about which ten spots within the lot would work, but I, I just wanted to include that in a resolution as Rebecca requested last week. So, moving on to number four, a review of the memo from our superintendent, Lou To Williger, and how he arrived at setting the prices for the, the two vehicles that were interested in selling. He gave us Kelley Blue Book values for each of these dump trucks. They were just north of like fifty-two-hundred dollars for vehicles that are in fair condition. And he, he arrived at the prices for each because, as he described, both dump trucks are in very poor condition. Each of them need transmi- transmission work and one of them needs a water pump. And that's how he arrived at the prices that he suggested that we, we sell these dump trucks Any further comments, questions? Okay, let's move on to, the next item is seven, the discussion about a proposed town and village master plan. Last week, I mentioned nine individuals who would be on the working group for that, that comprehensive master plan where the town and the village would pursue something together. I've been working with, with Katie, our, our clerk, to identify past resolutions and documents related to previous agreements that the town and village boards have had in terms of working collaboratively on a, on a comprehensive plan. And there is a resolution from January of two thousand fourteen that I think all the wording is, is something that we can just re-adopt, but we just have to change the dates within the, the document. Basically, the plan back in Jan fourteen was to have that comprehensive plan work done by the end of two thousand fourteen. I was originally hoping that we could just refer to an existing resolution, but if it's talking about a resolution that, you know, has specific dates attached to it, I, I feel like we can just re-adopt, we can just modify that resolution and, and essentially adopt a, a new resolution from scratch. So, let's put that on the November fourth agenda. So, item eight, Dennis has been working on a proposal or interfacing with Brogan O'Donnell regarding work on our village website. Dennis, you wanna give us an update?
Sure. This all came about, the Historical Preservation Commission was concerned that their website was not optimized, their specific board. So, I did all of the research and I realized that very little of our website is optimized. And in the past, I've had great personal frustrations trying to use it on mobile devices or tablet devices. It is not very user-friendly despite only having been rolled out, I think, in the last year. We spent a decent amount of money on it. So, Nancy was kind enough to point out that Brogan offered the, to improve the overall look and feel of the Village of New Paltz website, ensuring all aspects function regardless of browser type or size. She offered to implement a simple responsive web design grid, ensuring optimal user viewing experience on any device, i.e. phone, laptop, or tablet. She offered to boost website visibility by setting up optimization. And she wants to work with us to redesign the website based on any other feedback that we were going to offer to her. Nancy has the utmost confidence in her ability to do this and she's actually offering us a very, very friendly price of five hundred dollars to do all of this.
Five hundred?
Five hundred. And Nancy said there is room in the budget for this, so I would like to motion that we authorized.
Can I, can I add something before we go ahead and motion? One, an additional task that would be useful, and it seems like Brogan could help us with this, is I've had some discussion with community members who have studies or research regarding various projects that the village has engaged in. And it would be great to have a warehouse of some of those historical documents. Maybe we could, we could add that to this proposal if she could help us with, I think there.
An archive?
Yeah, an archive of, of various studies and historical documents.
We can, I can reach out to her and see if that's something that she would be willing to include in this price. Once we go over five hundred dollars, then we have to go out to RFP for it. So, it makes it a little bit more.
We'll see what, see what she says about that.
Yeah. I have a question, Katie, if I might be able to answer. Are we, have we started implementing online payments?
Yes.
We did, okay. Good. I thought so, I just wasn't sure I.
Yes, I knew it.
Great.
Okay, so I'll reach out to Brogan, I'll see, online payments via the website?
Yes.
Yes, yes, we did.
So, do we want a motion to authorize the award of this to Brogan with the, I don't wanna say contingency, but with the, with the added condition that there will be a request to see if she can go forward? If she can't go forward at this time with an archive, do we want therefore not to go forward at all or do we wanna still go forward with optimization, knowing that we could add an archive after the fact?
The latter, yes. So, move forward and then if she feels like the, the archiving functionality is, is an additional project that requires more compensation, we'll just look at that separately, but I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds good.
I'll second Tom's motion.
All in favor? So, the next item is, we're looking for the board to acknowledge, in conjunction with our New Paltz Transportation Implementation Committee, a coordinated application to the Ulster County Transportation Council Unified Planning Program. We have three projects, there are currently two projects listed on this, this agenda. The first, described here, is a study related to event, traffic, and parking. And the second would be a plan for an enhanced linear park along the Waukeal Valley Rail Trail between the upper section of Huguenot Street and down towards Plains Road. And what exactly an enhanced linear park means is kind of a work in progress. Our planner, David Gilmore, was gonna take a closer look at what kind of easements exist on the rail trail. It's, from my understanding, it's, it's pretty strict in terms of deed restrictions, in terms of what you can do, but there have been some thoughts about, you know, just enhancing or improving the, the rail trail experience. And so, that's, that's what that study was about. And then the, the third item that I asked him to include, getting money from the county for, in terms of a study, would be related to our NBR rezoned area on thirty-two North. You know, what would be involved if we were to include municipal sewer up the length of that area as well as improving the bicycle and pedestrian experience? You know, I think we've, we've done a great deal of work regarding the rezoning of that area, so we really need to, to take the next step and investigate, well, what could it actually look like if the municipality were to, to focus on some improvements there? So, that would be the, the third study that we would be looking for assistance with. So, this is really just getting acknowledgement from our board. Yeah, and I, actually, I guess what I could ask for as far as a, a resolution is just authorization of a letter from our board supporting our interest in receiving assistance for each of these three projects. You know, it would essentially be a, a letter that, that I would work on with the planner and, and would sign, but if we could have official authorization that our board is, is, is good with that approach and that we would be including that letter in our, in our request to the county.
So, move.
Sounds great.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay. And.
Oh, second.
Second.
Okay, all in.
We moved too quick.
So, oh, no.
The NBR's in there.
Where are my notes? I have very specific notes related to this. Oh, good, here they are. Okay, so, this is related to the, the rezoning that we were just speaking about and the, the footprint of that zone. And, you know, as we've discussed several times now, it's related to requiring any new development to be multi-story and mixed-use. And what we're, and, and an important thing, and we discussed this last week, is that we, we've received an opinion from the county planning board on, on this, this local law that we're looking to change. And their recommendation was to have a permitted use identified in the law, but we feel as a village board and as a pla- and our, after our planning board has reviewed this, a little bit more comfortable and we think it would be appropriate for each project to, to be a special use, just so it requires just a, a little more oversight from our planning board. And then with respect to SECRE, we've considered the, the various adverse impacts related to this law and those are all on file and described in the, the resolution that we're gonna look to adopt. The resolution also includes the repeal of the moratorium that we had created for this district. There was a building moratorium that had been set to go through the end of the year, but upon filing of this law, where is the language? We would be repealing the, the moratorium law upon the filing of this new local law as it will be no longer necessary. So.
Motion for, second and then roll call.
Okay. So, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this resolution to adopt Local Law Number Ten of the two thousand fifteen, amending the village's zoning code and issuing a negative declaration and findings in accordance with SECRE.
Second?
All in favor?
Oh, roll call.
Oh, roll call, sorry.
Your honor.
Aye.
Deputy mayor?
Aye.
Mr. Rocker?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Perez, absent since four eyes, zero nose, zero seeing, long absence. Motion, Gary.
Okay, so now for something fun. Dennis is gonna update us on his conversation with Police Chief Schneider on a curfew for Halloween.
So, Chief Schneider basically reaffirmed what Rebecca and I had suspected at our last meeting. The curfew is beneficial as the younger kids are usually the ones involved in eggs and criminal mischief and it gives them the ability to help control it and the tool to send children home or contact parents. So, given that our police chief feels that it is a good idea to have a curfew, I would like to motion that we have a Halloween curfew at ten PM.
Second?
Was it ten or ten-thirty? What was on the, where's the sheet from, from last time? Does anyone have that?
Two, I don't remember my memory packet. It's, uh, ten o'clock.
Great. So, did someone make a motion and second it?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. So, it's, it's ten PM to six AM.
Do you wanna read what's there at all?
Sure. Okay, I will. "Resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of New Paltz that there will be established a juvenile curfew for the Village of New Paltz where it shall be unlawful for any person under the age of seventeen years to be or remain in or upon any street, park, parking lot, or other public place within the Village of New Paltz from the hour of ten PM on the evening of October thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, until six AM on the morning of November first, two thousand and fifteen, unless such person is accompanied, accompanied by his or her parent or guardian, or a person over the age of twenty-one years who has in his or her possession written authorization of such parent or guardian, guardian to accompany the juvenile person at such time and place." Oh, I, I'll add this, actually, it's important. "The provisions of this resolution shall not apply while a juvenile person is proceeding in a direct route to his or her residence from the loca-" from the location of a school-sponsored religious or nonprofit employment-related activity between the hours of 9:30 PM and, and midnight, or the hours of 5:00 AM and 6:00 AM." Lot of detail.
Great. Okay, so next item is a discussion of draft policy regarding evening meetings. And I think as we discussed last week, our, our meetings are already scheduled for meetings, but I think it's very important that we keep the option open to have special meetings at any time. I've spoken with, with our treasurer, and she completely agreed that it's, it's limiting to, to say that we can't have meetings during the day, because emergencies arise, and it's, it's important to keep that option open.
Absolutely, but much like the two-meeting rule, we just use common sense with it. We make our best attempt to comply with the policy, but when something is an emergency and things have to happen, things have to happen.
Right, and I, I think it's better to have a, an understanding that, that, that of course, the meetings are scheduled for the evening, but we don't need to create policies that we can potentially break. It's, I mean, the, the understanding is to have meetings in the evening, and they're already scheduled for the evening. So, I don't think this, this policy change accomplishes anything.
Yeah, I'm comfortable not having a written policy as long as we are all on record stating that we're looking to have all meetings after six, unless it's an emergency. So, and I think we're all on the same page with that.
Great.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll just agree with that.
Okay, then, what else did we add to this agenda?
Water breaks, fire hydrants.
The press release?
We put that on consent.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, so we were gonna, we were just gonna announce, so Senator Bonacek has a, a grant program where municipalities can apply for up to $100,000. So, our village treasurer, Nancy, working with our engineering firm, Veneer and Laros, identified an opportunity to, that's a, a problem that's been hanging over our head for some time, where we need to update the digester at our sewage treatment plant, and that project costs just north of $100,000. So, we have applied for financial assistance to replace the digester at the sewage treatment plant. So, it, it, the, the project was going to cost just north over $100,000. Let's say we were successful and received the full $100K, so we would need board authorization in the future to spend money on the, the overage above the $100K, but that would be a very good problem if we were in that situation. So, it's also, I think, just useful to make sure we're all updated on, you know, different grants that we're pursuing, and then this is just one of a few. What else did we add?
Fire hydrant.
Oh, didn't, we added the appointment of Bill Murray as our, but I think we added that to the consent, right?
To the general consent.
Great. Okay, so, fire hydrant update. So this is now becoming a weekly thing, because I talk to Blue about this a few times a week. So, last week, there was a water main break on Huguenot Street, and we've mentioned one of the two expensive problematic hydrants. One was at the corner of Henry W. and Prospect, and the second was on Huguenot Street near Town and Country. So, while they were there repairing the, the, the water main failure on Huguenot Street, they actually put in a new fire hydrant across the street from the, the failing problematic one, that is now on the west side of the street, and is actually a little bit closer to the entrance to Town and Country. So, Blue was describing that as a, as a positive outcome. So, that failing hydrant is no longer an issue. So, the three hydrants that we have, we need to, to work on, and I'll, I'll provide an update for each of them. There was a hydrant that was used during the fire that took place last Tuesday, when the, the, the student building on North Chestnut, across the street from family of New Paltz, was on fire. That, that hydrant was damaged during the fire, so we have Schmitz Wholesale, that's who we order parts from. We have ordered the parts to repair that fire. That should be, that should be back online within the week. The other hydrant that we've discussed a couple times now is at the bottom of, of Lookout at Platicill Ave. That was scheduled to be repaired with the parts that we have now received this past Tuesday because of another water main break, and the inclement weather that we have had, that has been postponed until this coming Tuesday, so hopefully that will be back online next Tuesday. And then, the, the big hydrant project, which we agreed we were going to look to just go ahead and bite the bullet, and make sure that, you know, that's being dealt with as soon as possible. Blue is, is working with the contractor to get a bid on, you know, what would be involved in, in tearing up the street there at the intersection of Henry W. and Prospect. So that should also be dealt with and scheduled as soon as possible. So that leads me into, you know, I mentioned a couple of water main failures, and it's, it's uncanny how, how many disruptions we've had with water main failures in the last couple of months. It almost seems like with this 100-year-old infrastructure, when you improve or replace something that has failed, you create an imbalance in the system somewhere else, and it's just like this domino effect. And from what I understand, this is, this is pretty common. And one of the challenges that we've had as a municipality is, is, over the last several years, we have been facing these DEC consent orders regarding sewer. So, each year, we pursue small cities grants to pay for these, these sewer upgrades that the DEC is requiring us to, to handle. But what's interesting about the difference between sewer and water is the DEC can require us to improve and repair failing sewer systems, because there's a public health issue. Whereas water, there's, there's, doesn't seem like there's any such thing as consent orders that require you to upgrade aging water infrastructure. There's, there's not necessarily a, a near-term health issue, but there's a significant burden on our community in terms of having to, to pay for, for these, these upgrades. So, I'm working with our, our grant writer, Mark Blower, and our engineer, Rich Ruth, and Blue, and we're going to meet on Tuesday. And I've asked Rich and Superintendent Blue to provide kind of a, a wish list of, of, of all of the various water upgrades that they could identify. And this is millions of dollars of, of upgrades if we were to try to improve and, and upgrade our existing water infrastructure. So, there are basically three entities that we look for, for grants or loans. Unfortunately, or, we definitely do not want loans. Generally, we would obviously prefer grants. We, we were in a uncomfortable situation with the USDA, where we were pursuing a grant to pay for the water filtration up on Mountain Rest, and we were anticipating getting grant money for that $4 million project. And that was a, an enormous amount of work, and our treasurer, Nancy Bronco, has regaled me with the, the enormous amount of work required to pursue that type of application, and it was pretty disappointing not to get grant financing for that project, but to only receive a loan. So, you know, that's another $4 million that we have to borrow as a municipality to, to pay for that project. So, the, the challenge is then, there's this small cities grant, which you can get $600,000 for, and in four of the last five years, the village has been successful securing that grant, and we've used that money for updating sewer. But it's a bit of a moving target, because we have, you know, ongoing sewer infrastructure needs. So, the DEC can ask us to respond to an additional sewer need, and we might have to use that $600,000 if we were to apply next summer for that, you know, sewer need. So, we're, we're going to take a closer look to see if there are any other grant opportunities to, to update our, our aging water infrastructure. But, you know, we're talking about millions of dollars that need to be spent if we're gonna kind of do this correctly. And that's kind of what we're up against, and why it's so incredibly important that we are mindful of our, our credit rating and how much money we're borrowing as a municipality, because we have enormous expenses facing us.
The consent order by DEC, I understand, is prevailing. Still, it doesn't go away each time we fix something. It's a prevailing consent, it's a prevailing order that we continue making progress towards the goal of, of a healthy sanitary sewer system. And we haven't reached that yet. We have made very substantial progress during the last four years or five years by replacing these seriously defective, well, they're old, it's a really big issue. But what I was told a year plus ago, two years ago, I think, was that the situation on Platicill Avenue, so right outside our door, was such that we were in danger of catastrophic failure of the sewer, the main, the sewer main, which is about 100 years old. That has now been replaced. But the same prevails, I think, in other places in the village. So I don't think we have any option but to continue seeking those small cities grants and getting whatever we can. And we've been fortunate enough to get about $600,000.
Four of the last five years, right?
Four of the last five years.
So we have, so we're going to find out in December whether we will be awarded an additional $600,000 to go towards sewer. And there's an additional grant that this grant writer, Mark Blower, pursued on our behalf. It's a $100,000 grant from the DEC, and that grant would be used to try to actually wrap our hands around, or heads around, what we have as far as ongoing sewer needs, and what we need to spend money on to get ahead of this, this DEC consent order, once and for all. And Blue was saying, that's, that's also a challenging thing, too. It's like careful what you wish for. Like if you, you know, create a, an actual list of exactly what you need to do, then it's almost like a roadmap for more DEC consent orders, and, and so that's money that then has to be spent on those clearly defined needs. And then we still have millions of dollars' worth of water infrastructure that we're neglecting, unless we're going to pay for it out of our operational budget, unless we're going to pay for it by borrowing more money.
Yeah.
Or, or the alternative is to, is to, to not borrow and not pay for it out of our operational budget, but just regularly go and repair water main failures, which is what our guys have been doing, it, it seems like, at least once a week.
Yeah, there was another one on Monday, too, on South Chestnut.
And the one on Monday was the reason that they, you know, they were doing that late at night. I got the text from Blue telling me that they were working on that, and then they were not able to, to deal with the, the replacement of the, the fire hydrant the very next morning that they had scheduled. So, there's, you know, with all of this municipal work, there's a, there's a domino effect, and it's incredibly important to keep moving projects forward.
Deferred maintenance always costs more in the long run. But every university and college in the country lives almost on deferred maintenance. They don't do it, they don't do it, they don't do it, don't have to do it.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm meeting with, with our engineer, our grant writer, and our superintendent on Tuesday. I could probably report back next Wednesday.
Sounds good.
So, did, was, did we have anything else? Yeah, we were going to do exec.
Yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion, we go into exec.
Sure.
Personnel.
I just want to make a quick statement related to the town board meeting. I basically was accused of, actually it's in the New Paltz Times, of implying that none of the town employees were sick as a result of the conditions at town hall, the old town hall. I never did that. The conversation that we've had, where twice I have stated that I would be interested in seeing an OSHA report, something along the lines of condemning town hall in the interest of being able to get funding in addition to whatever else they may be eligible for, because the building, I'll, I'll quote what I, what I said at our last board meeting. "There could be potential for additional funding based on the fact that it is an emergency situation, and that we've had to find temporary means to house employees." That's not saying that I don't believe that they were ill. I do believe that they were ill, and for anyone to take my words and turn it into something else is pretty appalling, in my opinion.
I'll, I'll add to that. I, I feel like at our joint meeting in, was it, was it October or September?
Yeah.
But Rebecca raised this exact same point. She was very clear about why she was raising, you know, looking for documentation, because it could, it could support this, this premise of the village and town working together to, to construct a, a new municipal center. She again raised it at our meeting last week. It was very clear to me. I, I don't know how anyone would interpret it differently. I thought it was, you know, very useful thinking and a, and a great suggestion on her part, and I, I think our whole board interpreted it that way. So, it's unfortunate that it was misunderstood by, by anyone, so.
And just with that, I, I work at BOSI's. I've been there full-time for 14 years, and twice I've been evacuated from the building that I'm in. And I, Tom has seen a lot of the illnesses that I deal with. It's all autoimmune, and a lot of it was triggered at, from the very first time we were evacuated from that building. So, to think that I would not be sensitive or compassionate to people who are ill in, in a sick building is just completely untrue. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Rebecca. All right, let's go to exec.
I don't think so.
Second.
Actually, actually, we've taken the meeting.
I don't think so.
No, we're not, we're not going to do anything.
Yeah.
We don't plan to do anything when we come out of exec, just adjourn the meeting.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, I, I, I looked through it, and there was one word that I, that I would have changed.
I will adjust it immediately.
Yeah, I, I looked at, I didn't get a chance to.
I just, yeah. Important enough that I need to go on the record. I didn't even know you had been challenged when I wrote it. I just felt that your point was important enough to go on the record.
I'll show it to you right now.
Sure.
But I'll, this is what was said, but I'll, yeah.
I guess I need to read that one?
Pardon me?
I guess I need to read that one.
It's short, that's not nice.
Yes, please let me know with the adjustment to the word. Yes, Fran. By the way, love your haircut.
Oh, thank you.
Um, the text. One second.